Called order of working session for February 5th. Our first order of business is our presentation of the fiscal year 2023, 2024 audit. And David's going to do our presentation again this year.
How y'all doing today?
Great.
Good, good. So my name's David Yousafara with Malden Jenkins. I was the manager on the audit. Just to kind of get us started here, I want to go through, I don't know if you, do you all have copies of it? I know they provided it last week, I was told. Copies, okay, awesome. On, on page one, if you flip to page one, that's going to be our independent auditors report. That's where we give our opinion on the financial statements. And during our audit, we found once again an unmodified and clean opinion for the governmental business, or not business type, sorry, the governmental activities in each major fund and all of the aggregate fund information. So we found that to be clean and unmodified. Where we have a qualified opinion is once again on those component units with the library and this year, the Westview Behavioral Health Services, I believe, they, they didn't file their financial statements in time, so they weren't able to be presented in, in order to meet the deadline. I think we, we all decided that rather push forward with that qualified opinion as opposed to waiting for them. Just to get into some of our required communications with you all, I just want to go through those. So we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. We planned and performed our audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So the government auditing standards require us to issue a report on the consideration of internal control as well. That's going to be our report, that's towards the back of the report or the, of the statements. And that's just us going, talking about the effectiveness of the county's internal controls to the extent that we look into those. And during that, we noted two findings, which are repeat findings from the past couple of years and per discussions with Jeff and Debbie, it's things that are being addressed. And if we want to talk about those findings, the first one being the general ledger, just the system in general, not kind of working properly for rolling forward into new year, into the new fiscal year and running reports and just having issues balancing the different funds together. So, and I know the last time I was up here talking to you all, you were in the process of putting that or looking into a new system, so. And then the second finding being segregation of duties. And once again, that's just something that happens with some, some counties, some cities where there just might not be enough employees to cover all of the different areas that need to be segregated in a way. So what, what happened is you have several instances of overlapping duties where in your internal control procedures, where you might have some preparing a bank reconciliation and then there's no review. So they're, they're kind of reviewing their own work. Or the person who's depositing the, the money into the bank is also reporting it in the G, or recording it in the GL. So it's kind of trying to split those duties up. But again, it's, it can be tough in some of these counties just with lack of personnel. And then we also had recommendations for improvement, not necessarily findings, just stuff we recommend. And one of those being depreciation is currently being calculated on a, manually calculated on a spreadsheet as opposed to in a system. So we, we recommend that that with, maybe with the new system that's being implemented be put in, have, have an aspect of calculated depreciation. And then inventory, we noted that the general fund inventory did not change from last year. So we just recommend, it, it wasn't caught in any way due to immateriality, like it could have been also that it was just the same from last year, but it's something that we noticed, so we wanted to bring it to the attention of, of management and just to keep an eye on that. More required communications, we, we want to say we encounter no difficulties in dealing with management. Debbie and the finance department have once again been very helpful and great throughout this process. We encounter no disagreements with management over the application of significant accounting principles. We requested written representations from management relating to the accuracy of information included in the financial statements, and we had no issue receiving that. And there were no significant issues discussed with management related to business conditions, plans or strategies that may, that may have affected the risk of material misstatement of the financial statements. And then lastly, we are independent of the county and all related organizations in accordance with the governmental auditing standards. So if you flip to, to page six of the audit report, that's going to be the MDNA. This is what I would say, if you're going to take something from the financial report, read this. It gives you comparative from prior year to current year, like just dives into the numbers and what exactly they mean and kind of just digs into the county as a whole as well. So if you're going to take something away from this report, I'd say read that. But to kind of get into some of the numbers, if we want to flip to page 19, that's going to be your statement of net position, just at the government wide level. So this government wide level is going to include things like net pension liability, capital assets are going to be recorded here. And you're going to see that there is a net position of 20 million and of that 20 million, 18 million is what's invested in capital assets. So capital assets minus your outstanding debt. And then everything else is going to, then you have your restricted net position, which is really just your restricted fund balance for each fund totaled up. And then what, what you see is that 20 million, a lot of that is, is made or kind of subtracted from that is the net pension liability and the OPEB liability kind of take away from that. So you'll see the, the fund balance on the balance sheet for the different funds is going to be a little bit higher than that. So if we want to go to page 21, that'll be the balance sheet for the governmental funds. And you'll see the, the different fund balances, the general fund, which I'm sure is probably the most interesting one, you have a 16.7 million in fund balance, 15.6 of which is unassigned and 1 million in which is committed to the subsequent year's budget. That total fund balance is going to be an increase of 2.5 million from the prior year. And if you flip the page to 23, that's going to be your income statement and it's going to show where that increase is coming from. So you had the property tax revenues of 25 million and intergovernmental of about 5 million. So all that leading, and then being a little offset by the expenditures and the transfers out leading to that gain or the increase in fund balance of 2.5 million. Then you see an increase in fund balance kind of across the board for all those major funds, with the exception of the debt service, but there's about 8 million increase in the capital projects fund. And then after that, you kind of run into the notes, which are just a company, the financial statements are a key part, but I don't want to go through all those with you. I'm sure you don't want me to do that. But if you flip to page 65, this is where the budgets are. So you have the general fund budget and the, the, I think it's called the, oh yeah, the miscellaneous special revenue budget is going to follow that. And that just kind of gives you an idea, just, just, I'm sure you guys are very aware of the budget, just kind of highlighting that for you. And then to kind of wrap it up, what I kind of already talked about on page 78, where that's going to be our, that report I talked about on internal controls and it just kind of goes into what, what those two findings kind of mean and what, what they are. One is considered to be a material weakness, one a significant efficiency, and just kind of discusses what exactly those are. But otherwise, it's been another great year while working with Jeff and Debbie and the whole team. So very much appreciate the opportunity and if you guys have any questions, please just fire away.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Having spent the time, this has just been a concern of mine. I think we have an outstanding treasurer, but it handles so much money and every year it seems like we say separation of duties and all those kinds of things. Would it be possible for you, because we can't go over there and watch that office and understand checks and balances, could you give us recommendations on what you think those checks and balances could be or how we could adjust that?
Absolutely. And we, sorry, not to interrupt, but we have a, a specific practice in our firm, which kind of does this, and we've been doing this a lot more for counties and cities around the state. It really round the whole southeast, but we, they come in and kind of take, see what the operations are and give, give recommendations and help implement those policies that they, that they find might be more helpful. So we can certainly have, like have someone get in contact with Jeff or Debbie on that. And in regards to the audit, there's no, there's no, I guess, it doesn't get in the way of our independence if we have that going on in coupling us with us doing the audit. So we can certainly send that information over and get them connected.
That, that sounds good. Again, I'm not questioning that they don't do a great job. I just think that the separation of dues and checks and balance, every year we hear that, and I think you're just asking for trouble if you don't create some of those things eventually. So I do, I, I do think we need somebody to help unless Jeff, you got, feel like you got a better handle on that.
No, I think that's a great suggestion. And I was going to ask about independence, but it, it sounds like that's not an issue.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, we, we've really been getting into that a lot more lately. So I think it's been very helpful to have some of our clients start utilizing that aspect of our firm, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
I got a question on depreciation using that manual sheet. Is that because we went to a new software, they're not used to the new software yet? Don't we have a module in there that does depreciation for us?
Once the Tyler software is implemented, will there be depreciation within it?
All the way been implemented yet, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That was going to be my next question was Jeff. And I, I know it's not in yet and I think y'all are having fairly regular meetings, but do we have a timeframe to get, I mean depreciation is one of the most complicated things you can do. And it just boggles my mind that we're doing that on paper. And so how close are we, I guess is my question.
In the last I heard, I'm going to defer to Debbie as well, but this fall, I believe.
We're hoping right now the hardest thing to do is the accounts, the new accounts. So we're still. We're still working on account numbers, so we can't duplicate a lot of changes for all those accounts. We meet every Thursday by teams, and we're working frequently. After that, I think everything is shooting.
Yeah.
As far as the depreciation, the new system, when you purchase a piece of equipment, it scans into that system, and it'll automatically show up on a report. You don't like to do any, the county might have to do an appreciation table based on the cost of the equipment, but it will automatically feed into the system.
And then you select the method of depreciation in the system, yeah.
And, and I mean, I don't think anybody think I'm being negative toward the staff. If you know our system, we're moving from paper ledgers in the 19th century to the 21st century, and so we're jumping two centuries at once, and so I do know this is a big jump, but this is something long overdue for the county in my opinion, and, and something that I have seen as an employee of the county and certainly from this side as well. So, this is a big deal for this county in my opinion. It's gonna give us much more stability and understanding of where our finances are across the whole county. So, I think it is an important, very important aspect of county government.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And we don't want to make a rush job out of it.
That's right.
It's going to be done right the first time, so we won't have to go back and do what we've done in the past.
I, I couldn't agree more, because one thing I know about software is if people ever lose confidence in it, it doesn't matter how good you fix it after that, they'll never trust it again, so. So, do it once and do it right. Sorry, I didn't mean to take that.
My concern is because of the different regulations that's going on with the federal government, do we foresee any money not coming toward the state, the county, that's gonna affect anything?
You know, I personally don't have a good answer for you, but it's something that we can certainly look more into. I don't know if anyone here has been in contact with anyone on that, but I, just because it's been so soon, I haven't really seen it yet affecting anything, but it could be something that maybe we look into and get back to you on.
Okay.
We're talking about the freeze, I'm sorry.
Yeah, everything.
Yeah, we, we've got some grants that are, that are frozen, we're waiting for those to
Okay.
Yeah, to thaw out. They're still there.
Anybody else? Well, David, we appreciate you coming out and sharing that information with us and taking your time and doing a, a good job on putting together a great report.
Absolutely. Well, thank you guys for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to work on your audit yet again, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good day.
You too.
All right, next up, we're gonna be our update on the proposed ordinance to allow keeping hens, not roosters, as a condition used within a restricted residential zoning district subject to the minimum standards, which we have had a long journey with this, but hopefully we'll get it in order. And I know one of the reasons we tried to have this at the workshop again was to get steward up the speed on it and just kind of go over it again.
Sure. Well, well, like you said, it's been a long journey, and I started off as a 5K and now it's a full-fledged marathon, so it's been, it's been quite a journey. But we thought it would be helpful particularly for Councilman Smith just to be introduced to the ordinance and then give you all a refresher too, because it's been a little while since we last looked at it, and we made some changes along the way. That was part of the journey, there was an evolution that went into this. The goal would be, if you're comfortable with it, that it would be on the February 19th agenda for first reading. And taking that approach, assuming there were smooth sailings on the adoption process, you'd be looking at March 19th for third reading and final approval by council, then it would become effective immediately. So, I'm just gonna go through it for you. So, one thing that we discovered, and you know, the zoning ordinance has a number of requirements in it, and you know, I, I don't know that it's ever a finished product. I mean, you're always tweaking and, and working on it and trying to improve it, and you know, the planning commission works on that, you know. Y'all have items that you ask us to look at, and of course, staff, we're always trying to, you know, sort of like that mode of constant improvement. So, what we discovered is that in the current ordinance, with the exception of R2, R2 is our rural agricultural district, and you know, over 90% of the county is zoned R2. It's extensively used for low-density residential out in the county. With the exception of that district, our other four residential districts, the keeping of hens is prohibited. Now, there's not language in there that's prohibitive. What it is, is that any agricultural activity that's permitted within those residential districts other than R2 is specifically explicitly permitted. So, we felt like because we had a conditional use, for example, for horses, that in order, order to keep hens, like you could have horses, you would have to have an express authorization for that. And so, we've, we've developed, working with y'all and the planning commission, which by the way, this, what I'm about to describe to you has been approved and recommended to council by the planning commission, so it's cleared that hurdle, is allowing the keeping of, of chickens in our four residential districts other than R2. So, that would be our single-family residential, our RSV, which that's single-family residential that also allows recreational vehicles, like, you know, campers and, and the like. Our RSM, which is our single-family residential that also allows manufactured housing, and then our general residential district. So, it would allow that as a conditional use. So, there's three types of uses broadly speaking that are allowed in our zoning ordinance. There are permitted uses, and those uses are listed, and if someone wants to do that, it doesn't require, you know, other than maybe a building permit, it doesn't require a zoning permit, it's allowed. There are conditional uses, and those are the types of uses that are allowed, but there are certain conditions that have to be met in order for them to be allowed. And those are signed off by Ms. Words, you know, she's our zoning administrator, so Katie will sign off on those, and essentially you've got a series of boxes, and each box needs a check mark, and Katie is the one that checks the boxes. The third type of use that we have are special exception uses, and those work like conditional uses, but they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, the, the individual or the entity that's checking the boxes is the, the zoning board, not the planning commission, but the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, this would allow the keeping of hens in RS, RSV, RSM, and RG as a conditional use. So, this would go to Katie to review before it would be allowed. And so, I'll run down the conditions that have to be met. So, first, it, it's gotta be an accessory use, so it couldn't be the principal activity on the property, and it would have to be located on the property where the premises is. This is residential property, you wouldn't put it on a vacant lot, it's a separate tax map parcel from the tax map where the actual dwelling is. It would have to be on the property as an accessory use. You couldn't have roosters, this would be limited to hens. The cap on the number of hens would be 18 by conditional use permit. This is for egg, the, the keeping of hens would be for egg production, so, or at least they could be processed off-site, but you couldn't have onsite slaughter. So, the only thing onsite in terms of an activity would be the production of eggs. They can't be free-roamed chickens. Not only are they, are they to be penned, but they would need to be in an enclosure. And again, this is not R2. In R2, you can have an unlimited number of chickens, they could be free-range, you can have roosters. This is just within our residential zoning districts where you're on small lots with higher densities, and in terms of geographic area, it's a small portion of the county. Of course, chickens would need to be fed and watered and sheltered. Their feed would need to be stored in a way that would prevent, you know, rats and mice and other vermin from, from getting into them. They would need to be housed in a coop or pen or enclosure. That would need to be detached from the dwelling, so it would not be an attached enclosure, it would be detached. That also would need to be properly designed so that you don't have like predators getting in, you know, whether they're birds or coyotes or whatever they might be, and then also, you know, rodents and the like. The chicken enclosure would have to meet the requirements for accessory structures in the zoning ordinance, that's how it would be classified. You'd have the, the primary or the principal structure, which would be the home, and then you may have multiple accessory structures, and the, you know, the hen enclosure would be one of those. The cap on the size would be 200 square feet, so the, the enclosure couldn't exceed 200 square feet in size. It would need to be located in the rear yard, so not in the front yard or not in the side yard. And we define rear yard as the yard that is not fronting the street. So, wherever that, you know, and we do have, and probably in a few cases, not many, we have lots that are double frontage, and so the rear yard would be the one not associated, not with frontage on the street where, that the property is addressed by. So, that's kind of how, how that would work. There was a question mark about that with the lake, is the rear yard the front? A lot of people think, well, the boat comes up to the dock, that's your front door. But it would be in relation to the street, and that's how, you know, that's how the zoning ordinance works as we, we currently have it. So, then we've got a tiered approach here in terms of the number, you know, we said no more than 18, but then, but then it relates really to not the size of the property, but the dimensions or the geometry of the property. So, in order to have six or fewer hens, you, the enclosure would need to be located at least 25 feet from the side or rear property line, because you can imagine, or both, because it may be in the back corner of the piece of property, in which case it would have to be 25 feet from both, unless it's at the lake. If it's at the lake, you know, we work with elevation contours, Lake Greenwood's 440 and Lake Murray is 360, it would need to be located 50 feet off of that contour. So, in that case, 25 feet from the side lot line, 50 feet from, you know, SE&amp;G's line and Lake Greenwood's line with Greenwood County area. If you wanted to keep seven to 12 hens, we're kind of working in half dozens, because you always think about eggs in terms of, you know, dozen eggs. It's 50 feet from the side or rear property line. So, if you want to have twice as many chickens, or hens rather, you're gonna have to have twice the setback. And then it's 75 feet from the two lake contours. If you want to keep 13 to 18 hens, 18 being the maximum you can have, it's 75 feet. So, you can see every half dozen, it goes up 25 feet. Now, we did add language in there, what about properties that are zoned RS, RSM, RSV, or RG? But they're immediately adjacent, they share a property line with R2. You know, because in R2, you know, that individual that owns that property, if they wanted an unlimited number of chickens, roosters, and hens, they could have them. And not only that, they'd only have to meet the minimum setback, which is seven feet from the sideline and 20 feet from the rear line. And so, we said, hey, if you've got a rear line or a side line, lot line, that is shared with R2, you can use the R2 setbacks. Because, you know, then that way it could potentially be worst ca, if you want to say worst-case scenario, you'd have mirror images as opposed to one property under having to meet a higher standard than the one that's right across the line. So, that was kind of the logic, logic behind that provision. In terms of the, any manure, we had a higher setback for manure, it's 50 feet from the side or rear property line regardless of the number of hens, and also regardless of whether or not the property that's adjacent is R2. And so, it's a minimum of 50 feet. If you get into a situation where we've got the 75-foot setback, so you had like 13 to 18 hens, then it would be 75. It's, it's the greater of the two numbers, 50 feet at a minimum, or if there's a specified setback in the ordinance that's greater than that setback would apply. And that's, that's essentially the, the ordinance. I mean, it's got language in there about noise, and it references our noise ordinance, and then also odors, and there's a general reference there. But in terms of the specific requirements, I mean, I just kind of highlighted those for you. So, any questions about it?
I don't have any.
Any, any concerns or think, think we need to address?
I feel like I'm being that guy tonight, but I gotta, I, we talked about the fees associated with this before, and that was made a big deal the night we had Chickengate. And so, would it be possible for this council as part of that ordinance to do like a stay period before we started enforcing that, say like we gave people to the rest, this year, if they already had chickens, even though it wasn't allowed, to go ahead and get those permits and waive the fee on it and not start, not start charging the fee until the first of the year? That way it doesn't look like we just trying to invent a way to come up with more revenue, because nothing could be further from the truth. It, it's not gonna be a revenue. If you figure out how much manpower it's gonna take to do it, we're probably gonna lose money in the scheme of things. So, could we maybe go through the rest of this year and just say, we'll waive the fee on the permit and, and just let you get it, and then start at the first, or some kind of deadline? I'm, I'm just hypothetical about where it is, so that that it and something where we just, just to try to take that argument out of play for it.
Well, yeah, and I, you know, I even thought, you know, we were just talking about including that in the motion, or we maybe could even have two specified dates specified in the ordinance, that the provision of the, of the ordinance are effective on immediately, but the application of the fee is effective whatever date y'all want, you know, July 1st or December, you know, January 1st of '26 or?
I'm just throwing that, some of you other guys that are in here, y'all might have a different opinion of that, but I'm just throwing that out to
Include that in the
Yeah. I, I would say make it one year from the date that this becomes effective.
I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay. Whatever date that is.
And maybe the easiest thing is just, we'll just make sure, we'll get a note to y'all, but just include that in the motion on for, maybe that would be easier than putting it in the ordinance, yeah.
So, between now and next year after it goes into effect, how are we gonna go ensure that the people that have chickens are in compliance with the new ordinance? If they built the coops the right way or the independent and they meet all that, so that means we, how do we know who all has chickens, you know, if they're not, not gonna go fill out?
Though, they still have to come fill out, I'm not suggesting they don't have to do the paperwork, my suggestion is we waive the fee.
Just they want to waive the fee.
Yeah. I'm, they still need to come in and do it, but if, I mean, the, the truth is, most people didn't, if they have chickens in those areas, they didn't know that they were violating the ordinance.
Yeah.
And so, give them a chance to come in and get it without charging them the fee, but if you wait over a year, now we're going to consider them new and then do it. I'm not, I, I still want them to follow the process, just not charge them for it.
Absolutely. And you know, when you think about it, I mean, bringing those into compliance, we're not gonna have the same level of work to do that, because the
Right.
We charge is really to go out there and stake it, and then there's a repeat visit, and in this case, we're just making sure that it'd be a one-time visit. Unless there's an issue and then we'll
Are you okay with that? I don't, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with you, I'm, I'm
I just, I just wanted to clarify that for
Yeah, no, they still need to follow the process, we just won't charge them anything. And the only other thing I'd say as to that is, there, there was a, a local publishing of an article, and the headline was that we were gonna limit the number of chickens, and that caused World War III from my telephone and probably most of ours. And the truth is, the exact opposite was going on, and so I'd hope that we could work with our media outlets a little bit so that we got a much clearer explanation of what was going on. I know that, I know that sold, but nothing could have been farther from the truth about what we were trying to accomplish as a council, and it caused a lot of heartache and trouble.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll work on that.
One, one question I do have, on the enforcement side of this, I guess you got twofold enforcement. One is a situation where you have somebody that just refuses to get the permit or abide by the requirements. And, well, I guess, like I said, one is to get the permit, the other one would be just refusing to abide by the requirements of the ordinance. What is our steps in that enforcement of, of this ordinance? What would, what would be the steps to go through with that?
Well, you know, we would follow that same corrective action agreement that we, we have in the nuisance codes. Y'all remember that, when we went through that adoption process, we talked about how we would give folks a reasonable period of time, and I think that reasonable period would vary depending on the magnitude of what needs to be done to, to come into compliance with the ordinance. So, you know, I, I think that would probably be, that would be the better approach to take too with it, is just to tailor it to, okay, what's involved with this? You know, if there is an enclosure or some investment that's been, you know, been made to house the chickens.
Right.
You know, working with them, because, you know, they're incurring the expense again, you know, a second time. And that's something that we would just continue to do, because, you know, some folks aren't gonna be aware of this, these issues, and the fact that there are, you know, requirements that like, you know, setbacks that, that, that apply, and then they're discovered after the fact, you know, after it's been built. You know, you gotta try to work with folks, you know, give them some time. So, I think it would just vary. So I think it would just vary.
So if, if for whatever reason, and, and I'm, I guess I'm coming in this really, really green, but, you know, I'm, I, I know how the enforcement steps carry weight whenever you're dealing with a state or a federal situation, but I don't for a county. So if, if our consent agreement is ignored, or, or they just don't consent to do anything at all, do we have capability to order to levy fines, or at that point, I mean?
It would go to, they'd get an ordinance summons, and it would go to magistrate court.
Okay.
And what we do when we sit down and have that sort of corrective actions conference is there's actually a written agreement that they sign. And it plainly states, you know, here's the timeframe, these are the things that need to happen, and if they don't by the deadline, unless an extension is granted, then that's the next step, is the summons.
For magistrate court.
That's right.
At that point. Okay.
Yep.
Goodness. Thank you.
But we try to bend, you know, I hate to say we bend over back, I mean, we try to be...
Oh, I know, I, I get it.
It's accommodating this week.
That's right. I'm just curious, you know, because you always have that one person that's going to push the envelope, you know?
Yeah.
So, just curious.
Good point.
Any other questions? Well, I do want to say I appreciate everybody's input and help in getting this ordinance together and getting it in a form that, you know, I think can suit everybody, and, you know, it was a long road, but I think we've got something we can work with and, and build on. Do we have a, any other questions, comments? Have a motion adjourned?
Well, I wondered if I could mention something to y'all, would y'all mind? I, I know it's a little off-script, but it is in the area of, of building and zoning. It's two things, actually. The first is, and this is not reflected in the LDR, and that's actually on me, and I hope y'all don't mind us making a change between first and second reading, but Carl, you had actually brought this issue up about subdivisions. And could somebody, over time, do minor subdivisions to avoid the major subdivision requirements that may involve infrastructure? And definitely the, you know, all the, all the planning, all the check boxes that have to be checked, you know, for a major subdivision review through the Planning Commission. And so we've developed some language for that, but it is not currently in the ordinance that's in front of y'all for first reading. But the, what we would recommend to you is that we add a section under, a subsection under major subdivision. When you look at Section 26 in that ordinance, it gets into the type of subdivision, you know, there's minor and major. And major is anything that is five or more, you know, when a, when a parcel is split into five or more subparcels. We wanted to, to add language in there that would observe a 10-year period, and once you got to five subdivisions over that 10-year period of time, that, that fifth subdivision would be treated as a major. It would have to go through the major process. So, you know, you, you, there's some incremental steps that you could take, but once you hit that fifth one, which is really the, that's the threshold between major and minor, then you, you would go into the major category, and you'd have to go through the full process with the Planning Commission. And it just, you know, it was a tricky, it's a tricky one to address. It's not the easiest thing. But we thought just adding some language in there about parent track. So you, you'll, you'll notice that term that currently does not exist in the, in the ordinance, so that would be a new term in there. And then we would be adding the subsection, you know, about incremental divisions into, into one or more lots. But once it hit that fifth one over a 10-year period from that original parent track, which is going to require some tracking on building and zoning's part, and some coordination with the assessor's office, but we think we can do it, it, it would trigger major subdivision approval. If that sounds reasonable to y'all, I think it addresses the issue you raised during the, I think, the last work session.
It was.
Yeah, or next to last one we did.
And I thought of a couple of other things, too, we might want to add. The one thing is like protecting cemeteries, you know, that are on land that people are trying to develop, that they just don't go in and, you know, destroy them or move them, or say, oh, we didn't know that was, they were there, and, and people in that area know they're there, but they may not be marked or anything, so we may, may need to put a section in there on that to help protect cemeteries.
Okay.
And there's a lot of them in Newbury County on, on different pieces of property that end up, people forget about it, and they come up for sale, and there they are.
There they are, yeah.
Or they've been...
And it make you rely on state law, now, because there's some pretty heavy rules and regulations about exhumations and that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
From my funeral home.
Work. Yeah. The, the second thing I wanted to mention to y'all, and this is still in building and zoning, when we worked, when we got DNR to review, you know, we basically took the FEMA flood ordinance and used their model to craft the, the revised flood ordinance for Newbury County that y'all adopted last month. There was a minor, I say minor, a, some, a minor language change. It was a date where we were referencing it in a relative sense, and they wanted a hard date in there. We thought we were following the model ordinance perfectly with FEMA, and they, they've asked us to address that. And, you know, when you do something by ordinance, the only way to change it is with an ordinance. And, you know, I really regret this will need to go back to y'all, but we're, I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're just going to put together a very simple ordinance. It will address one section in the flood ordinance, and specifically within that section, how the date is stated. Because it's a litmus for, you know, how the, how that ordinance is implemented with respect to those properties. So that'll be coming to you, and I didn't want that to catch you off-guard, but it's just, just one of those things. It'll have to go through three readings and, and a public hearing.
Any other questions? We got a motion adjourned our work session?
Motion.
And the second by, Mr. Reader made a motion, and the second by Councilman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I get told I sound black.
Adjourn till our 65th regular meeting.
Our Vice Chairman Nick Sheerly, our Chairman, could not be here tonight. He's out of town, attended the conference, so I'll be filling in for him. Our first order of business is the invocation and pledge by Councilman Fulmer.
All right. Let us pray, please. Dear Lord, we humbly come to you tonight as your humble servants. We respectfully ask your forgiveness for the many shortcomings that we have, for we know they are many.
Yes.
Please be with our family and friends and loved ones that are sick and in need tonight, as we know there are quite a few in our, in our community. We, we ask you tonight to let the decisions that we make here tonight to be pleasing in your sight and beneficial to the citizens of Newberry County. For these and whatever else you see that we may need, we humbly ask in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the blood of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agendas, and we'll take all of these. This will be the Newberry County Council Work Session, January 8th, the Newberry County Council Meeting, January 8th, Newberry County Council Work Session for January 15th, Newberry County Council Meeting from January 15th, and our Newberry County Public Safety Courts Committee from January 27th. Do I have a motion that we accept these as one? Motion by Mr. Johnson and second by Mr. Fulmer, all in favor? Unanimous, passes. All right, is there, second on the agenda is our additions, deletions, adoptions of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
Right in.
Motion.
Right in.
Second, all in favor? All right, item number three, we have personal appearances, and the first one is Mr. John Snow, our CEO of Newberry County Memorial Hospital. John, please come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to see all of you tonight, and it's an honor to be here. Let me begin by thanking you for your support of our hospital and your service to Newberry County. I'm grateful for your service and your support. I'm excited to speak to you today about the incredible strides we've made as an organization over the past year, and a half that brings future, brings a bright future, and we are building together, that we're building together. It is an honor to represent the 474 teammates and medical staff, highlighting a few of their key and recent achievements, in addition to the heroic work performed daily in our patient rooms, emergency departments, our surgical suites, and our outpatient clinics. As many of you know, we've been working diligently on our strategic plan, and I'm thrilled to announce that we've successfully completed the process in the summer of 2023 through March of 2024. And on the screen in front of you, you'll see eight boxes that represent our strategic plan that we'll be following over the next several years. I'll read them for you. Distinction of South Carolina's premier community hospital for patient care experience and outcomes. Strength and expand access to inpatient primary care and specialty care. Recognition as a preferred health care partner for population health and workplace health. To modernize, modernize care sites and digital presence, technology integrates commerce and care. Develop reliable collaborative care in tertiary, quaternary, and innovative care systems and pathways. Maintain an inspiring workplace that is preferred by top-tier workforce talent. Advance health care equity for all and preserve financial stability. This plan has been a crucial blueprint for our growth and our development, and is already driving significant and positive change across our organization. In September of 2023, we opened the Newberry Medical Center of Newberry College. It's located in the Darby Nursing and Health Sciences Center, Sciences Center on the Newberry College campus. The compassionate staff and patient-centered approach have made an essential resource for our community, providing greater access to quality health care. The clinic's integration with our hospital further strengthens our commitment to delivering exceptional care and supporting the health of our community. This is an image of our medical center located on the Newberry College campus. We refer to it today as the Newberry Medical Center of Newberry College. The picture on your right was on the grand opening that was hosted by Newberry College in 2023. In July of 2024, we proudly partnered with Midlands Anesthesia Group, a critical addition to our service offerings. This group provides anesthesia coverage for our emergency, excuse me, for our OR suites. I continue to be very impressed with this company and how the Midlands anesthesia providers have complimented our amazing surgical service teammates and medical staff. This group is all, already making an impact, enhancing the care we provide to our patients and supporting the wider health care community in new and exciting ways by providing quality anesthesia care with a personal touch. And in August of 2024, we partnered with Loveless Family Medicine for an inpatient medicine program. For many years before 2024, that inpatient medical care service was provided by community physicians. We partnered with Loveless that would provide inpatient care as well. This program helps ensure patients receive highest quality of care and attention throughout their hospital stay. It's just one more way that we're staying ahead of the curve and delivering exceptional care. I'm also pleased to share that we've seen a significant reduction in turnover across our teams. This reflects not only our commitment to creating a supportive work environment, but also the dedication, the dedication and hard work of everyone involved. It's truly inspiring to see how much we've accomplished together. And then this slide, you could see just images of our staff and their work environments, enjoying each other, but also enjoying the work that they do at Newberry Hospital. In September 24, Newberry Hospital completed construction of a new, of a new office building located at 2474 Kynard Street. The medical office building is the new home of Newberry Hospital's Center for Adult Physical Speech and Occupational Therapy Services. Palmetto Bone &amp; Joy relocated its Newberry Orthopedic Office to lease space also within this building. Our commitment to improving quality of life remains at the core of everything we do, and this new facility will further enhance our ability to deliver exceptional care. We look forward to continuing our work in this upgraded space and supporting our community's health and well-being. Most recently, just this past February, or in February, just this past week, we've relocated our stepping stones pediatric services to a new and larger improved building. This move allows us to provide even better care and enhance facilities and resources to support the growth and development of every child we work with. We're thrilled to continue serving our community from this new location located on the hospital's property at the atrium building, offering the same exceptional services in a space that's designed to help children thrive. Speaking of team growth, we're excited to announce that Dr. Becky White, pediatrician, has also joined our team, bringing her pediatric experience and leadership to a new primary care and pediatric practice opening this month. We're continuing to expand access to medical care in Newberry and actively recruiting primary care providers and specialty care providers. These additions will be pivotal in helping us meet the needs and access to care for our growing community. And this year marks a milestone for us. I don't know that many of you know this, but we're celebrating our 100th year. It's an exciting time at Newberry Hospital. 100 years of dedicated service to our community is an incredible achievement, and it's a testament to the trust and commitment of everyone who's been part of our journey, from our providers to our staff, to the support of Newberry County Government, thank you again, the city of Newberry, and most importantly, to the patients who trust their care to us. As we celebrate this incredible century together, century of care together, we look forward to the future with a renewed sense of purpose and excitement of what's to come. As part of this continued evolution and growth, we're thrilled tonight to announce a new name for our familiar and trusted hospital. With refreshed branding aimed at enhancing public awareness, unifying our facilities under one identity, and improving communication with our patients and stakeholders, we're proud to introduce to you, Newberry Health. We're excited to reveal our new look, as you can see on the screen above you, Newberry Health Cares. We're excited and proud to introduce to you, Newberry Health. While we're always honoring our past, this new brand represents to our growing community the contemporary quality medical care in a state-of-the-art facility. We're building the legacy, we're building on a legacy of excellence that's designed to last, that's defined us for the last hundred years, and I'm confident that we'll continue to achieve even greater things together. Thank you for your commitment and services to Newberry, and thank you for your support of Newberry Health and Newberry Health Hospital. That concludes my prepared remarks.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Our next personal appearance will be Stephen Knapp, our Executive Director from the Newberry County Museum. Come on up, Steve.
Alrighty, well, it is certainly good to be back while the PowerPoint's getting pulled up. There we go. I wanted to come before you this evening, give you some reports as we talk about what we accomplished in 2024, but also where we are looking ahead into 2025 and beyond. So, 2024 was a very exciting year for the Newberry Museum. We did several special exhibits, all partnering with other organizations. We started the year off partnering with the Newberry Fire Department, celebrating their 150th anniversary. And then we also partnered with the National Museum of Civil War Medicine, which was a very big thing for us, partnering with a national museum that was willing to loan us artifacts and histories to help us tell a national story in a local context. That exhibit enabled us to showcase new artifacts previously unseen by the public, such as this surgical kit from Spencer Glasgow Welch, which I still cringe every time I look at the blades. This exhibit also, I think, highlights the growing reach that the Newberry Museum is beginning to have, both within Newberry County and actually now throughout the country. In the picture on your left, you'll see the benders. They approached the museum around late '23 with a collection of about 350-odd letters from the Civil War. These letters were written by George, George Higgins, who moved from Newberry County near the Silver Street area down to Mississippi, fought in the war, came back, then went to Florida. And they are just a treasure trove for a historian. They are full of his stories, where he was wounded, even his thoughts on why is this war happening and as it's progressing, what it means for him and his family.
As many of you know, we've been working diligently on our strategic plan, and I'm thrilled to announce that we've successfully completed the process in the summer of 2023 through March of 2024. And on the screen in front of you, you'll see eight boxes that represent our strategic plan that we'll be following over the next several years. I'll read them for you. Distinction of South Carolina's premier community hospital for patient care experience and outcomes. Strengthen and expand access to inpatient primary care and specialty care. Recognition as a preferred healthcare partner for population health and workplace health. To modernize care sites and digital presence, technology integrates commerce and care. Develop reliable collaborative care in tertiary, quaternary, and innovative care systems and pathways. Maintain an inspiring workplace that is preferred by top-tier workforce talent. Advance healthcare equity for all and preserve financial stability. This plan has been a crucial blueprint for our growth and our development, and is already driving significant and positive change across our organization. In September of 2023, we opened the Newberry Medical Center of Newberry College. It's located in the Darby Nursing and Health Sciences Center on the Newberry College campus. The compassionate staff and patient-centered approach have made an essential resource for our community, providing greater access to quality healthcare. The clinic's integration with our hospital further strengthens our commitment to delivering exceptional care and supporting the health of our community. This is an image of our medical center located on the Newberry College campus. We refer to it today as the Newberry Medical Center of Newberry College. The picture on your right was on the grand opening that was hosted by Newberry College in 2023. In July of 2024, we proudly partnered with Midlands Anesthesia Group, a critical addition to our service offerings. This group provides anesthesia coverage for our emergency, excuse me, for our OR suites. I continue to be very impressed with this company and how the Midlands anesthesia providers have complimented our amazing surgical service teammates and medical staff. This group is already making an impact, enhancing the care we provide to our patients and supporting the wider healthcare community in new and exciting ways by providing quality anesthesia care with a personal touch. And in August of 2024, we partnered with Loveless Family Medicine for an inpatient medicine program. For many years before 2024, that inpatient medical care service was provided by community physicians. We partnered with Loveless that would provide inpatient care as well. This program helps ensure patients receive highest quality of care and attention throughout their hospital stay. It's just one more way that we're staying ahead of the curve and delivering exceptional I'm also pleased to share that we've seen a significant reduction in turnover across our teams. This reflects not only our commitment to creating a supportive work environment, but also the dedication and hard work of everyone involved. It's truly inspiring to see how much we've accomplished together. And then this slide, you could see just images of our staff and their work environments, enjoying each other, but also enjoying the work that they do at Newberry Hospital. In September '24, Newberry Hospital completed construction of a new office building located at 2474 Kynard Street. The medical office building is the new home of Newberry Hospital's Center for Adult Physical Speech and Occupational Therapy Services. Palmetto Bone &amp; Joy relocated its Newberry Orthopedic Office to lease space also within this building. Our commitment to improving quality of life remains at the core of everything we do, and this new facility will further enhance our ability to deliver exceptional care. We look forward to continuing our work in this upgraded space and supporting our community's health and well-being. Most recently, just this past February, or in February, just this past week, we've relocated our stepping stones pediatric services to a new and larger improved building. This move allows us to provide even better care and enhance facilities and resources to support the growth and development of every child we work with. We're thrilled to continue serving our community from this new location located on the hospital's property at the atrium building, offering the same exceptional services in a space that's designed to help children thrive. Speaking of team growth, we're excited to announce that Dr. Becky White, pediatrician, has also joined our team, bringing her pediatric experience and leadership to a new primary care and pediatric practice opening this month. We're continuing to expand access to medical care in Newberry and actively recruiting primary care providers and specialty care providers. These additions will be pivotal in helping us meet the needs and access to care for our growing community. And this year marks a milestone for us. I don't know that many of you know this, but we're celebrating our 100th year. It's an exciting time at Newberry Hospital. 100 years of dedicated service to our community is an incredible achievement, and it's a testament to the trust and commitment of everyone who's been part of our journey, from our providers to our staff, to the support of Newberry County Government, thank you again, the city of Newberry, and most importantly, to the patients who trust their care to us. As we celebrate this incredible century of care together, we look forward to the future with a renewed sense of purpose and excitement of what's to come. As part of this continued evolution and growth, we're thrilled tonight to announce a new name for our familiar and trusted hospital, with refreshed branding aimed at enhancing public awareness, unifying our facilities under one identity, and improving communication with our patients and stakeholders. We're proud to introduce to you Newberry Health. We're excited to reveal our new look, as you can see on the screen above you, Newberry Health Cares. We're excited and proud to introduce to you Newberry Health. While we're always honoring our past, this new brand represents to our growing community the contemporary quality medical care in a state-of-the-art facility. We're building on a legacy of excellence that's defined us for the last 100 years, and I'm confident that we'll continue to achieve even greater things together. Thank you for your commitment and services to Newberry, and thank you for your support of Newberry Health and Newberry Health Hospital. That concludes my prepared remarks.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you so much.
Our next personal appearance will be Stephen Knapp, our Executive Director from the Newberry County Museum. Come on up, Steve.
All righty. Well, it is certainly good to be back while the PowerPoint's getting pulled up. There we go. I wanted to come before you this evening and give you some reports as we talk about what we accomplished in 2024, but also where we are looking ahead into 2025 and beyond. So 2024 was a very exciting year for the Newberry Museum. We did several special exhibits, all partnering with other organizations. We started the year off partnering with the Newberry Fire Department, celebrating their 150th anniversary. And then we also partnered with the National Museum of Civil War Medicine, which was a very big thing for us, partnering with a national museum that was willing to loan us artifacts and histories to help us tell a national story in a local context. That exhibit enabled us to showcase new artifacts previously unseen by the public, such as this surgical kit from Spencer Glasgow Welch, which I still cringe every time I look at the blades. This exhibit also, I think, highlights the growing reach that the Newberry Museum is beginning to have, both within Newberry County and actually now throughout the country. In the picture on your left, you'll see the benders. They approached the museum around late '23 with a collection of about 350-odd letters from the Civil War. These letters were written by George Higgins, who moved from Newberry County near the Silver Street area down to Mississippi, fought in the war, came back, then went to Florida. And they are just a treasure trove for a historian. They are full of his stories, where he was wounded, even his thoughts on why is this war happening and as it's progressing, what it means for him and his family. We worked to transcribe, I'm jumping ahead a little, but we transcribed all 350 of them. They came to us in '23, basically wanting to just identify the letters, some of the people in them, but they wanted to take them to Mississippi State because George Higgins was also one of the first students of Mississippi State University. And some of you know, that's where I've been working on my PhD. So although disappointed, I at least knew where they might be going. Mississippi State turned those letters down, and so they came back and donated the entire collection of letters to us. And they are, again, just an absolute treasure trove. We are still recovering from transcribing them, though, because a lot of them are cross-written. That's where they would write one way across one page and then write back the other way to try to save on paper. I've gone completely cross-eyed trying to read all that stuff. But this was a fantastic exhibit for us because we highlighted all parts of the county, we highlighted both sides in the war, and we're really able to bring a national story into a local focus, talking about medicine and trauma during the Civil War. We also opened our museum botanical garden. In connection with this exhibit, we partnered with the Nose Gay Garden Club to produce a botanical garden with medicinal plants related to 19th-century herbal medicine. This has proven a tremendous success for us. It's really beautified the courtyard of the museum, which we can now use for programs and events. And we're already thinking of ways we can use this garden moving forward, looking at tying the different plants in it directly to all of the exhibits that we have. We've also had some wonderful interns in 2024. One of our interns was Gwendolyn Bowers. She was from Piedmont Tech, and she worked mainly in graphic design and arts. And she actually reproduced a lot of our brochures, redesigned them, spiced them all up a bit. Her big success was redoing our children's scavenger hunt at the museum and making it much more appealing to children, updating it with new artifacts. And that has been a tremendous success for us. We run out of them all the time. And we are looking forward in 2025 to hosting more interns from both Piedmont Tech and Newberry College. There we go. We also really worked to increase the number of presentations that we do at the museum. We did one on 18th and 19th-century herbal medicines, which was very successful. And as part of the Toll of War exhibit, we talked about Newberry's African-American soldiers of the Civil War. One of our big things at the museum is researching the stories that have not been told here in Newberry County. And we have stumbled into a great many African-American soldiers who served with the Union Army during the Civil War. And so we've been trying to uncover their stories by going through pension records and figuring out where they lived and what happened to them after that conflict. As part of our end-of-year report, we had, according to our front desk clicker count, 3,634 visitors to the museum. That is a 5% increase over last year. Visitors to the museum came from 39 states, one territory, and 11 foreign countries. When looking at our out-of-state visitors, we had visitors from North Carolina and Georgia. Those are the two states with the most visitors. And then we had visitors from Kansas, Oregon, West Virginia, Texas, and one person from Connecticut. Foreign visitation, which I'm always just blown away by the countries that come and visit the museum. We had visitors from Honduras, Colombia, Portugal, Spain, Germany, the UK, Ireland, Italy, Belgium, India, Rwanda, South Africa, and Canada. And it just amazes me how all of these people are coming through the Newberry Museum. We also have seen a noted increase in research visits. People from Newberry County and beyond are really starting to gravitate towards the museum as a place to do research, whether it be into genealogy or even just identifying artifacts. We have really noticed a great increase in people coming, trying to uncover their own histories. Some of the things we're looking forward to in 2025 and '26, we are working on expanding and redoing some of our permanent exhibits. Our military exhibit, for example, over the past year, we obtained a great collection of World War I artifacts. We almost have a complete World War I soldier's backpack, most of it made up with artifacts from Newberry County, and a complete doughboy's uniform, complete with gas mask. So all of these artifacts are going to be used in a redesigned military exhibit to talk about the importance of veterans in Newberry County's history. We've been doing a lot of research into churches. One thing we are looking at doing down the road is a small rotating exhibit that will try to go through all of the churches in Newberry County. I figure by the time I retire, we'll be a third of the way there. But that is going to be a tremendously fun project. We've been out talking to churches, kind of getting them excited about their own histories, and we're going to try to do kind of a rotating thing that eventually, one day, will have gone through every church in the county. And by that point, there'll be some more, and we'll start over. We also have a lot of research projects going on within the museum, and these help guide some of the exhibits that you will see in the coming years. We have volunteers working on researching the Hope Rosenwald Schools. We've also partnered with the Gallman Place Project to help research some of that history. We have an exhibit, actually, that is going to be opening later this week for Black History Month that is looking at schools, African-American veterans, Malcolm Lissane, and just highlights from African-American history here in Newberry County. But we have some very dedicated volunteers working on the history of the Rosenwald Schools and other schools here in Newberry. We've also been looking at a period that is not often talked about in the South, and that is Reconstruction, talking about the Union occupation of Newberry County after the Civil War. And I'm just going to tell you right now, I smell a conspiracy. Newberry County has always been known as being very German. The regiment that is sent to occupy Newberry County after the Civil War is the 56th New York, who are predominantly German. And I also believe that they take the award for one of the worst uniforms in the war, that man with the X, that was a bright red X right over your heart. Something tells me in a war with rifles, that might not be the best idea. But these guys occupied Newberry. The guy there on the right was their commander, Charles Van Wick. He commanded the occupation here. His headquarters right over there at Newberry College. We have been able to find a lot of their letters up in New York, where they're writing home describing what's going on here in Newberry County. They say we had better sauerkraut. I take that as a very good thing. And I am up to four cases of Union soldiers marrying local women. So it's a very fascinating story, and I'm trying to build kind of an image of what this occupation looked like. I've also found their arrest records, which almost every single one is public intoxication. But it's a very interesting story, too, because these guys seem to have liked it here, which makes me feel good. So that'll be a story we're definitely delving more into. An exhibit coming up later this year is we will be delving into the history of the textile mills here in Newberry County. We're very excited about this one. We've been kind of working on this one, kind of in the background for a long time. It's going to highlight the mills in every part of the county, including here in Newberry, Prosperity, and Whitmire. So we're very much looking forward to that exhibit. Also, again, showing you the reach and the fact that we are indeed at the center of the universe. Recently, we received a request from the National Museum of American Diplomacy in Washington, DC. They are under the State Department and affiliated with the Smithsonian, that they want to borrow some artifacts from us, which, as a museum person, that is an incredible honor when a federal museum starts wanting to borrow your stuff. And it is no coincidence that one of their curators is Taylor Livingston, who's from Palmaria. And she knew that we had some stuff from the Samsung plant in our museum, and so they want to borrow our stuff related to the Samsung plant. So I'm intending to make full use of this to get back into the collection rooms of the Smithsonian to see what I might want for our museum. Just to give you an idea of their facility, they're a brand-new museum as well, fairly young, so very nice facility that they have. We're also partnered with the South Carolina 250 Commission on Documenting the American Revolution here in Newberry County. We are working very diligently with them to research Tarleton's route through Newberry County and some of the engagements, and telling the stories of folks whose stories may not have been told. We're especially delving into the loyalists and African-Americans here in Newberry County during the revolution. And that shows our international reach. We have uncovered a group of loyalist descendants, primarily with the last names of Bebenbaugh and Shealy, in Canada. And there is an organization called the United Empire Loyalists. They are like the SAR but for descendants of loyalists in Canada, and they've agreed to actually partner with us in helping to do some research and produce markers. One of the biggest things I'm working on, which down the road I may be asking for some of your help in, is getting this rifle to the Newberry Museum. I've told Andrew a lot about this. This rifle has an amazing story. It belonged to a patriot soldier in the Revolution who fought at the Battle of Mudlick Creek, which is down near Chapel's. And he was killed. And a British soldier picked this rifle up and took it back to Britain and gave it to a British gunsmith who has the best name in history, Durs Egg. You can't make history up. Gave this rifle to Durs Egg, who reworked it and then presented it as a coronation present to King George IV. This rifle is a personal possession of the British Royal Family and is currently housed at the Royal Armories Museum at Windsor Castle. I sent them an email about a year and a half ago, asking, would it be possible to get this rifle? And they sent me the 150-odd-page form to fill out. So they have acknowledged my existence, and I take that as a good sign. But this is a huge project that I'm working on because this is something that needs to be seen here in Newberry County. So I'm working on getting that for us. And stay tuned, because we've got a whole lot more going on, and I could rattle on for hours. And I just want to continue to thank Newberry County for all of its wonderful support of the museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Before we move on to our next thing, I just wanted to thank John again for coming, and I've had the pleasure to go to several board meetings and stuff and been impressed with the things they've done with Newberry County Hospital. And also to thank Stephen for his work at the museum. I've gone to several exhibits, excellent job, and worked with him on other issues. And we're just glad to have both of y'all in Newberry County, supporting the people here in our great county. Thank you. Item number four. Item number four's ordinance number 02012025 is the ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established present to zoning ordinance number 12-24-01 as revised and amended by the zoning ordinance number 06-11-16 and codified in the chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications and districts so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling three and nine-hundredths acres designated on tax map number 295-7 from residential, single-family to residential R2. We have a motion. This is first reading. We have a motion. Accept that. We have a second. All in favor? Any comments?
Too late now. Too late now.
They discussed it.
Were there any opposed?
None. Any opposed? None. Unanimous.
That's what polls say.
All right, moving on to number five. Ordinance number 02022025. An ordinance acting as a request to amend the official zoning map established present to the zoning ordinance number 12-24-01 as revised and amended by the zoning ordinance number 06-11-16 and codified in chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications and districts as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two and seven-eighth hundreds of acre designated on their tax map 741-79 from RS Single Family Residential to GC General Commercial. This is the first reading. We have a motion? Motion by Mr. Reader, second.
We have them. Some people who protested.
What's that?
We have them. Some of them protested.
On this one?
I believe so.
No, I think it was on the first one. Did you want to give some information on this?
Yeah, I'd say, what if you don't mind, if we could get a second and have discussion, I'll be glad to run down this one, and if you don't mind, address the first rezoning. I can at least talk a little bit about the process going forward and give you the details on it.
You got a second?
We need a second.
So we need a second, though.
All in favor?
You don't want, yeah.
Let me, I'll run this one down first, and if you don't mind, let me go back. And I know that's maybe a little out of order, but if y'all don't mind, I can give you a summary of the first one, too. Okay, so the one that's in front of you now is a rezoning request. This is a map amendment. You know, we have two types of rezoning requests. There are text amendments and map amendments. This one is a map amendment, which would change the zoning designation, if approved, for a piece of property on Highway 76 between Little Mountain and Chapin. So if you're going down 76, this would be on the right-hand side after leaving Little Mountain before you enter Lexington County. Specifically, this piece of property is next to Lewis Auto Service, if you can kind of picture that on the right-hand side of the road. In this particular case, the property owner has a potential buyer for a portion of the property that is proposing a gymnastics center there. The property is currently split-zoned. We have some instances of that, and actually, this kind of, in a roundabout way, relates to both of these rezonings. It's currently split-zoned RS Single Family Residential that would be on the front side or adjacent to the road, and then on the backside of the property, it's owned R2 Rural. That's our, you know, most of Newberry County, over 90% is owned R2 Rural. They're requesting that the property be rezoned to general commercial, which would permit the gymnastics studio. It's located within the development overlay of our comprehensive plan. As y'all know, the comprehensive plan is basically the roadmap for uses of land and the development of land in Newberry County. You know, we use the zoning ordinance and the land development regulations to implement the comprehensive plan. This rezoning to general commercial would be consistent with development overlay, and that's been requested by the property owner on behalf of this prospective buyer, and it's recommended to you by the planning commission. So they are recommending the rezoning that's been requested.
Any comments, Andrew?
Do we have anybody that's against it?
Well, you know, the way this process will work, this is first reading. Second reading will occur at the, three readings are required for approval. It's an ordinance, so you have to, so that's three separate actions by council. In conjunction with second reading will hold a public hearing, and that'll be an opportunity for anyone who wants to speak in favor or against the proposed rezoning to provide comments to council. So that'll be at the next meeting. And then after y'all vote, I can address the...
Four?
I'm sorry, sir?
On four?
That's right. Yes, sir.
We can open now.
On the previous one?
We've begun. On the four.
We're voting on five, and then once you vote on five, I'll go back to four and give you the details on it. Yes, sir.
We got a motion to accept this ordinance, number five?
I think we got the motion and second.
Do we have a second?
Any questions?
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Pass is unanimous.
Okay.
All right. Please go back and address number four. My first meeting is acting chairman, so I rushed through that, sorry.
Not a problem at all. Let me brief you on this. Okay, so this particular piece of property is located, it's actually, you know, we were talking about the land development regulations and the concept of a double-fronting lot. This is that type of property. So it's a little over three acres. It's located on Highway SC... It's located on Highway SC 2134. So, this is between Newberry and Silver Street. Going out, it would be on the left-hand side of the road if you're leaving Newberry headed in the direction of, you know, Silver Street, Saluda County. It also has frontage on the backside of the property on Old 96 Road. So, it's got double frontage. The property is currently zoned RS, which is Single Family Residential. The property owner is requesting that it be rezoned to R2 Rural, which again, you know, a large, significant amount of the county is zoned R2 Rural. So, we've got quite a bit of that. He's specifically requesting the rezoning. His daughter would like to locate a manufactured home on the property. And more specifically, it would be a portion of the property. So, this will involve a minor subdivision. You know, when we're talking about the land development regulations, we talked about major and minor subdivisions. When you split a piece of property into two pieces, and one of these pieces would be a little over an acre, and then the balance of the property would remain, you know, with him under the current ownership, it's a minor subdivision. So, it's something that's approved at the staff level. So, that's a separate process. The property is located within our rural development overlay in the comprehensive plan. And like we had talked about when we revised the comprehensive plan, not only is it the roadmap that guides your decision-making and the recommendations of the Planning Commission, but there's also, based on court decisions, a consistency requirement. Our zoning ordinance has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If it's not, you have to amend the plan. And more specifically, you look at the future land use map, which is the rural development overlay that I mentioned, that this property is located within. The rural development overlay, or the requested rezoning to R2 is consistent with the rural development overlay, but also the current zoning is of RS. Both of them are. So, if council were to act to approve it, that would be consistent with the plan. If you voted down the rezoning, that also would be consistent with the plan. This item went before the Planning Commission at their last meeting, which was last week, and they have recommended the rezoning. Now, the process for this, you've done first reading. It requires three readings. Any ordinance can only be changed with an ordinance, which is what you would be doing. Second reading would occur at the February 19th meeting. And third and final reading would occur at the March 5th meeting. The public hearing, which is required by state law, will be on February 19th. And that'll be an opportunity for anyone who wants to speak in favor or against. So, the fact that it passed at first reading, or any ordinance for that matter, that it passed at first reading does not mean it's adopted. It's got to go through that full process.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
So, you said that the homeowners next door have required to come to the next reading?
They would, they could certainly come to the next reading, and they'll have an opportunity to speak in public here again. And of course, we have public comments at the end of all of our council meetings. But the hearing will be a dedicated comment period to that rezoning request. Yes, sir.
All right, so that covers four and five. Going on to item number six on our agenda. Ordinance number 0203-2025 is an ordinance to amend chapter 154 of the Code of Ordinances of the County of Newberry to adopt the updated Newberry County Land Development Regulations. This is our first reading. We have a motion?
Motion.
Motion and second? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Item number seven. The consideration and approval of the proposed tools to provide counseling services for disaster recovery and FEMA public assistance per RFP number 2024-10. Do you have some information on this?
I figured y'all would want some info on this one. Okay, so we had the hurricane, of course, back in the fall, Helene, and there was some significant damage in the county. Now, we were, I guess you could say, fortunate. Like, if you wanted to compare us, for instance, REA, the co-op, I mean, they had facilities that were just ripped apart by the storm and had significant costly repairs to their electric grid. We didn't have that kind of damage, but we did incur expenses related to responding to the storm. And we had some damages. For instance, the elevator in community hall, we had an issue with it. It's in the basement, and we had flooding associated with the hurricane. FEMA now will fully fund the services of a consultant to help you basically prepare all the paperwork and the reimbursement request for your storm-related expenditures. In the past, that was not something that was offered. It is now. I think it would be wise for us to do that, to meet all their deadlines, to have a consultant in place for it. And so, we issued a request for proposal. And I believe we had, and I'm sorry, looking at the tab again. We had eight respondents, and we had two firms that scored very high, Roston and Burquest. Roston actually scored the highest, by one point. So, if it was a horse race, it would have been by a nose. We, however, as a staff, are recommending that y'all consider awarding the contract to Burquest. And the main reason why is we're working on a March 14th deadline, and they are located closer to Newberry County. Now, we've worked with the other firm in the past. In fact, they previously were our debris monitoring company if we ever needed to trigger debris monitoring. They weren't at the time of the hurricane, but previously they were after the 2015 flood. Had good experience with them. Our recommendation is purely based on the geographic closeness or proximity of the Burquest, the firm we're recommending. And they're actually currently engaged by the authority and I think one other entity in Newberry County. So, they're already working here. And, you know, time is of the essence. We need to get this, all this information into FEMA again by the middle of March.
Any other questions, Jeff?
I don't want to be that guy, but I've been that guy all night, so I might as well keep going. Why would you have a scoring system and then not follow your scoring system?
Well, the way our ordinance reads, it gives us the ability and council the ability to select the firm that is most advantageous to the county and our interests. And with it being essentially a dead heat, we felt like that geography, which was not one of the criteria, scoring criteria, was a tiebreaker. And I know technically they weren't tied. They were within a point of one another. And then plus, we're on a pretty quick turnaround on this. And that's a reason for our recommendation.
Where's the other company located?
You know, I'm trying to remember exactly.
Should we have made that part of our scoring process? If that was going to be a consideration, maybe?
You know, when we started the process, we had realized we had the March deadline. Yeah. So, that's really why it wasn't considered as one of the weighted, you know, you had four weighted factors.
So, my question is, if we take, make a motion and second and take a vote on this, are we awarding the contract?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then we'll get them to work immediately and get that request into FEMA.
What is, what was your scale? Like, one through five, one through 100?
It was. And then they were weighted, and I think those attachments are in the agenda packet. And the scores ended up, they were 90, hang on, let me look at the composite. 92 and 91.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, statistically, the same?
Basically, yeah. But I think those were all excellent points.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and accept the council's, the staff's recommendation just because I have that much trust in our staff. But I do think for future reference, we probably, if we're going to consider something like that, we need to put that in to our scoring criteria.
And make that a factor.
Yes.
And not only geography, but also the timeline thing. Make sure they can meet the timeline.
That's right.
Any other questions? So, you have the motion? We got a second? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any appointments out there? You have ones?
I see what works. The planning commission.
Can you repeat the name for me one more time, Mr. Chairman?
Tashiba Works.
Tashiba Works on the planning commission. Is that an at-large position or just for a?
Replacing one.
Okay.
Second nominee. I'll second that nomination.
All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any other appointments? Moving on to number nine, public comments. And we have several people signed up, seven. And during our public comments, each person will have three minutes to make their comments for themselves. They cannot speak on behalf of somebody else and bank three more minutes and three more minutes. So, each person can talk, and they'll get three minutes for public comments. When we come back for the public hearing, you'll, the people can have, that'll be like five minutes to talk during that public hearing on the second reading. It looks like Tommy Boyd is first on the list, which would like to come up?
Mr. Chairman, before we go, have we have a timekeeper? Someone keeping that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, man.
Thank y'all for letting me come up here. Appreciate this. I'm here to address a road problem down in the neighborhood where I live, Seagull Lane, off of Arconard Road. It's been an issue now. I've been a resident down there for permanent, for 25 years, and been a landowner down there for 40 years. This road is a very, very need of some assistance. And it's, it never was constructed like it should have been to begin with. Never did have the foundation in, and it was just paved over and everything. If we can't get it paved, could we get it surfaced in certain areas where we have potholes and just, just a disaster road? Just make this quick and easy. A disaster road where actually people have to stop and the other cars come by because of the condition of the road. It's really gotten dangerous for the cars, dangerous for the people that are driving. And it just needs to be aware, I want y'all to be aware of what's going on down there and see if we can get some assistance down there to get something done to make it a better road to drive down. There are 60 homes down that road, taxpayer dollars, and they're driving through an obstacle course of potholes, manholes, speed bumps where they have been tried to be repaired through the years and just, it's just disaster for a non-speaker to make it easy. Can we get some assistance down there and somebody look at it and see what we can do with it? Thank y'all.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank y'all very much.
Y'all have a good evening. Next up on the list is Chuck Fellows.
Thank you, Paul. I'm here just to note something in the comprehensive county plan. You talked about two golf clubs there. The two clubs are very fine clubs, but something is omitted from the Newberry County Golf Club. It's 102 years old. And that was kind of significant. They just had their celebration, and at their celebration, they published a book. And I would like to share the book with the council. They've done a lot of good work there. The hurricane did a lot of damage, trees, but not only did the staff, but the members came together. And in one week, they got the course back in operation. Remarkable. The other thing is development, economic development. I would like the county to consider vertical farming. It has a presence in South Carolina. The county has facilities that are vacant and property, and it might be an entrepreneurial opportunity for people in the county. This is agriculture. We got people that know agriculture. They know the work. Might be a labor force opportunity for us just to improve the economic development of the county. Any questions for me?
Which course is that? Are you leaving this book with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Which golf course is that?
Newberry Country Club. Not mid-Carolina, not mid-Carolina, the Newberry Country Club. Yeah. Yeah, my tongue gets in the way of my teeth sometimes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also have a very nice public course up in Whitmire, so I hope that gets included as well.
It's mentioned.
Shameless plug.
Next up on the list is Kimberly Coon. Is that right?
Crone.
Crone, okay.
Yes, I'm Kimberly Hawkins Crone. I live at 543 Old 96 Road, just down from the land that is requested for rezoning. I understand, living close to family, so that you can be there to help them in times of emergency, because we are all family and friends in that community. We look out for each other. However, the homeowners who are wanting to rezone this land have other options for placing a mobile home for their daughter and her children so that they can assist them and be close without having to cross the busy 34-121 highway. The current landowner owns an approximately 13-acre tract across Highway 34-121 from this three-acre tract. The 13-acre tract includes RS and R2 zoning, and the current landowner could utilize this adjacent property for this purpose instead of requesting a deviation from the current use. There is no need for rezoning, given the current landowner's other property that is already zoned R2. Furthermore, the current landowner has not paid the 2024 property taxes on the three-acre tract, and this should be a prerequisite to even submitting an application to rezon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up on the list is Erwin Willis.
It's Erin.
Erin?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I am Erin Willis, and I live at 4595 South Carolina Highway 34-121. And I own property adjacent to the three-acre tract in question. I object to the rezoning because they have property already that does not have to be rezoned for someone to live there. The rezoning would affect all three acres, and this allows three mobile homes on the property, and we must consider the future use and not just today's effects. They own approximately 13 acres across the road that does not require rezoning, and they would have much quicker access to their grandchild. There is only one landowner in support of this rezoning, and I request a show of hands from those in attendance that wish to keep the land zoned the way it is currently. These are all landowners in the community surrounding the three-acre tract. None of us agree to it being rezoned. Thank you.
Now, are there, are there currently any?
Mobile homes?
Yes.
No. There are no mobile homes in the area.
Looks like, is that, I think it's Metz.
It is. It's Kristy Metz. And I have a handout, if you would like it, that just shows the property we are referring to. And I would just like to say that I live at 4671 SC Highway 34-121, Newberry. I too own adjacent land, both to the three acres that are in question that we're discussing, plus the 13 acres across the road that the landowner also has that part is already currently zoned for the R2. And I am in support with the other, my sister and my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, it looks like Greg Turner. Is that right?
I'll be brief because I was part of that same group. But yeah, the one thing I just want to point out is typically, when you have a group of homeowners who own all of the adjacent land around a parcel of property, and I am diagonally directly across the street from this parcel. If county council were considering something for some large commercial purpose that was going to create economic development for this community, then I could see county council having to. having to weigh decisions very carefully. But when there is no true economic impact being forged whatsoever with the reclassification of this piece of property, I think that all of the landowners who own all of the adjacent property around it should be those that the county council hears. And I would suggest that you do listen to the landowners who are going to be impacted by this the most, and I would appreciate your considering not rezoning this.
Thank you, Greg. All right, last on the list, looks like Tyler Turner. He's going to be speaking on behalf of somebody, but like I say, you can speak and you get three minutes.
That's fine. I appreciate you guys' time. Tyler Turner, I'm speaking on behalf of Deborah Cassidy, Tenny Longshore, and June Pitts. All three of those are landowners adjacent to item number four, which is rezoning from RS to R2. You guys have a handout that I brought by, I'd appreciate if you guys look through that and follow me through it. So there's a couple of things, using it kind of as a visual aid here. The comparison of property type, the closest manufactured home that I could find that's going to be close is actually 1.1 miles up the road. So this, this shows the house by actually Erin Willis, who just spoke just a few moments ago, built in 2020 at 2,500 square feet. The other one is going to show a tax map ID number 295-81 with a mobile home on it, owned by Jeffrey Pitts and Yanni Reader. It is 2010 square feet, built in 2021, so that's, that's pretty, that's pretty close as far as, as far as comparison. So using the Newberry County public record on there through the assessor's website, we're able to sign, find that both of them roughly are on three and a half acres of land. The total market value, according to the Newberry County Assessor, of Ms. Willis's home is 217,000, and of Mr. Pitts and Ms. Reader is 83,000. So that shows a difference in value that's there between a stick-built and a manufactured home. Last week during the joint planning commission, there was some stuff out, how to compare, you know, manufactured home versus stick-built homes and the pricing comparison and stuff, and, and I used one of the home builders, I went directly to their website, and I actually had an article discussing that. I included that in that, since I only have three minutes, I'm not going to take the time to read that, except for one excerpt where it does say manufactured homes typically aren't considered real estate property and are titled as personal property in the same way as a car or boat, so they do not carry the same value and can affect the value, of course, of the surrounding properties. The next page you'll see is manufactured homes with a vinyl skirting, which in the manufactured home business, they refer to as block leveled and skirted. This is the type of quality home that you're looking at, just some pictures there for reference, of course, a visual aid. The next is stick-built homes, and not only are these stick-built homes, but these are five of the residents of the surrounding landowners. You'll see that a manufactured home with, that is block leveled and skirted, is not really in comparison to the other properties that surround this property, so it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. Then highlighting as well on, on what Ms. Kron said, the last pages six, seven, and eight are the three options that would be available to them. Option one, of course, is the current proposal being discussed, but that requires being rezoned and cutting out an acre of land on that, which of course permanently changes the zoning, but it is also opposed by every landowner and homeowner within a 300-yard radius excluding the property's owner. So that, that is opposed by every single one of those. Option two will actually show you a plot on there, and it'll show you approximately a drawing of about one acre that could be cut out with an easement that is, is zoned R2 already that the mobile home could be placed. Okay, that's time. All right. I appreciate you guys, I'm happy to discuss this a little bit further with you if you have questions.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for providing the handouts for us.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's everybody on the list for our public comments.
Mr. Chairman, I was actually going to sign up, I ran to the bathroom when I come back, guy took his sheet up.
If you want to come up and state your name so we can?
Please, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all hearing me out. I'm Brandon Davis with Carolina Home Outlet. I'll be speaking on behalf of the family that is actually looking for the rezoning. Mr. Jeff, do you have the handout that he gave you?
I do. Yes.
All right, so this is a statement from?
We've got.
Okay. I'm sorry. So this was, the second page here is actually a 32-square mile GIS drawing that I'd done when we went to planning and zoning. If you'll look, 93% of this area is already zoned R2, and they were able to identify with the little red dots at the county for us, mobile homes that are already in the area. And so there are houses a lot, there are mobile homes, manufactured homes, a lot closer than the 1.1 miles that were stated by the previous person. So there are a lot of mobile homes in this area. I think it would be great to, to move for the rezoning. One, affordability is correct, but it's attainability. When you're looking at the financial statement from people and you're looking at the cost of housing, the average housing right now is between 140, 180 square feet on these homes. Manufactured housing is able to produce obtainable housing for less than 60 a square foot. So when you have a person in a situation like Ms. Lisha that has limited access to resources and income, it makes sense to do this. And the lifespan of these mobile homes are 30 to 40, sometimes 50 years. And again, when it was put in front of the planning zoning, they asked the question, how, how do we know that? I could put anybody in a million-dollar mansion, if you don't take care of it, it's going to fall apart. You put somebody in affordable housing, they take care of it, and it'll last just along stick-built. I actually lived in a mobile home all my life. My father bought, bought it in 1982, it's still standing today. It's been remodeled twice, and it's cost less than $150,000 since 1982 to maintain the mobile home and keep it up, and it's probably one of the best-looking houses in his neighborhood. And that's what I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that's not signed up on the list, public comments? Yes, sir, come on up, state your name.
I'm William Morris. I'm married, my wife actually owned a property. And I'm not a public speaker, so if I stagger, stagger a little bit, oh, my daughter, like I said, she's gone through a divorce, she has to move. We're looking at that piece of property because it's the most affordable place to put her. If we put her behind us or in, off the road where they're talking about, just the driveway is going to take up any money she's got, not to mention putting water line in there to it as well. Plus it'll entail easements across other parts of the property to get to it. Oh, it's just, like I said, just the driveway and, and the gravel will put a hindrance on her. She's got a limited income, she has to move because of the divorce. It, the home she's in for the last 15 years, it belongs to her ex-husband and their family. But they're letting her stay, it, it just got renovated for my grandson. But she'll have to get this house and then have it renovated so that she can move in. And that's, that's the whole, we didn't intend on doing any of this, but you know, life happens, and you got to take care of your kids. And I mean, and I'm here for any questions if you have any.
I'll be at the, at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
May I speak?
Come up and, and give us your name.
I'll be quick. Just to give county an idea of how, my name's Mitch Howard, I'm with Carolina Home Outlet. Just today, this afternoon, I closed a manufactured home for $200,500. And this was done today as a standard double-wide, it's for evening night, we did brick it, so we got about $10,000 in the bricking of the $200,500. The appraisal came back, I do have a copy of it, it came back at 202,000. It's on a half-acre land on the corner of Fish Pond and Little Tracy's Road. So I'm just saying manufactured homes have come a long way through history. There were some numbers that we had come up with during the planning thing that showed 93% of that area is manufactured homes. I don't know within what distance of the territory they're talking about, but they not, they right down the street, and there's a whole lot of them. And we have come a whole long, a long way with these manufactured homes. And usually typical life is at least 30 to 50 years, if it's taken care of, it can be 50 or more, and the siding itself usually has a 20 to 30-year warranty on your siding, your roof 25 years, and that's just, the product's a whole lot nicer than in years past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Pam, come up.
Hi, I'm Lisha Wasinger. I just wanted to reiterate that the land will be split up into two places. It will be over an acre, so there's only going to be two spots that a mobile home could go. There's not three, there never will be. And like he said, this is not our intentions, I do, I don't, I didn't want this. But anyway, I just wanted to say and reiterate that it could only be two, ever, not three. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come up and state your name.
David Adams, changing the topic. I'd seen we're on agenda, you guys were going to bring up the chicken issue, and maybe I missed it as far as the order?
It was in the work session.
It was in the work session? I didn't know if you're going to bring it up tonight.
No. It'll be, probably the next meeting, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. So the first reading will be at the, at the next meeting. All right, anybody else? All right, we move on to item 10, comments requests from the county administrator.
Yes, sir, I know we've had kind of a long, you know, between the two meetings, we've had a long meeting, so I don't want to, I don't want to keep you all too long, but I will tell you, I mean, there's a lot going on right now, and I guess a 100,000-foot level summary of that is, you know, we've got $6.6 million in grant projects that we're working on right now, and that's excluding some smaller grants in other areas. This is primarily community and economic development, and $47 million of capital project sales tax projects, and all of those projects are moving. Of course, we've had some funding that's been frozen, some federal funding, but it will, you know, that'll, that'll be addressed in due time, so those projects will continue to move forward, and we'll just kind of keep you updated on those. And of course, the budget process has started, and expenditure requests were due from the department heads yesterday at 5:00 PM, and they've all come in, and so we're assembling that and developing some recommendations for y'all to consider next month at our budget work sessions.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Comments from council? Leon?
Yes, sir. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, taking part in your local government. It's encouraging whenever folks are concerned about what goes on in their community, for sure. So thank you, everybody, for coming out. I will make two comments along those lines. Obviously, council has to make decisions, never ever going to satisfy everybody, so we certainly do the best we can, for sure, and we try to consider all, all aspects whenever we make a decision. But I will encourage folks that, keep in mind, there's nothing like family, all right? I know most of you probably kin in one way, shape, or form, and there's nothing like family. So whatever, whatever you can do to work things out, make it agreeable to everybody, I encourage you to try to do that, for sure. And, and that's across the board with anything, so there's nothing, there's nothing more valuable than family, regardless of what it is, all right? Wives come and go, husbands come and go, but you're going to, you're going to be kin forever, so whatever you can do, I encourage you. So, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Just thank, again, also thank everybody for being here, appreciate you so much. Wanted to just publicly send flowers and thank Jeff for helping me with some constituent service this week, and it's certainly nice to get a thank you message when we're able to take care of something that somebody has a legitimate concern about, so we're certainly appreciative how accessible you are to us and how you keep projects going and look out for things. So we're, we don't tell you enough how blessed Newberry County is to have you as our administrator, and so I'm just going to send, send a few flowers this evening, and then lastly, just thanks, so many of you have, all my council members have called, and some of you stopped me in the hall and everything, and asked me about my wife and my daughter, and we, we still are in a very real struggle, and so we just appreciate that you think enough of me and my family to even ask, especially pray for us, is, is beyond a blessing, and I'm grateful and thankful for that.
Yes, I'm glad to see everybody out tonight. I think we did have a lot of productive material today. I'd like to give a blessing for Todd, his wife and his family, that everybody continued to improve, and I also like to tell all of you, on a light note, Valentine's is coming up. Do what you got to do, keep your marriage going, and that's all I have for tonight.
Stuart?
I'd like to thank Newberry Hospital for 100 years of service. What a, what a great honor token we have for, for them, for being in Newberry for us and taking care of us, that was a great accomplishment. And I'd like to thank Newberry Museum for their hard work, and I've really enjoyed it, looking forward for all their hard work they're doing, so really looking forward to that. And thank y'all all for coming out and participating in local government, it means a lot for the participation, but thank y'all.
John, may?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, especially my community, and we're struggling to have a decision made, and we're going to make this decision together, regardless of what it takes, you got to ride to the end, make decisions. I'm begging y'all to come, come back on the 19th and be here and ride to the end, make a good decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and giving us input, and encourage everybody to come back for the public hearing, to voice their concerns and stuff, you know, that's the only way we know, is getting the hearing from the people, so we encourage everybody to always come to the meetings and get up, public comments, voice their opinions and everything, participate in the process. Think, like to thank Jeff for putting together a good program and for our workshop tonight, going over the audit and discussing some other details and stuff, and also giving us our zoning clarifications and issues on the two zoning issues we talked about tonight. And also, I'd like to thank Jon Snow again, I think he's already gone, but the hospital, for all the services they do for the citizens of Newberry County, and the museum, the great things they do and bring people from other countries, other states here to see things. They put on a great show. And I also see John Favor back there, he does a lot for the museum, and he's done an excellent job on all those different presentations, and I actually took my wife and a friend of hers from Maryland that are nurses, and they loved that thing on the Civil War medicine. They were very impressed with that display and the authenticity and all the artifacts they had, it was something outstanding. Thank you, guys, again, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. Future meetings. Our first one, Newberry County Work Session, February 19th at 5:00 PM. Newberry County Council Meeting, February 19th at 6:00 PM. Newberry County Executive Committee will meet on February 24th at 5:00 PM. And Newberry County Work Session, March 5th, 5:00 PM. And Newberry County Council Meeting, March 5th at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, Mr. Steely's not here in also county, he can't do that anymore. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.